Welcome to our special corporate infrastructure and regulatory scrutiny committee meeting on the 22nd of October 2025. Housekeeping first, we'll go straight on to that. A fire alarm is not expected today, so if the alarm sounds, please make your way to the nearest exit and congregate on the Covelawn. Please switch off or silence all mobile phones and laptops as well there, please. I can just add that in. Can I remind those joining remotely to mute their microphones and to turn off their cameras unless speaking? Please can all speakers ensure they are talking into their microphone? Reminder, this meeting is being live streamed. Cabinet members and officers are asked to keep introductions to their items brief, raising key points to the committee who will have read the papers. Please do not share any presentation on the screen until your time commences. And again, my little point, I ask, we do not use acronyms in this meeting. We may or may not be familiar with them all, but members of the public, our constituents who choose to watch this may not be. So please know acronyms in this committee. Please remember to keep our questions to the point. Consider if our question has already been answered. Keep our observations focused and let's get through our meeting as quickly as possible, but with due focus and attention. Louise, we could have your apologies, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, we've got apologies from councillors Abbott, Davis, Ketchin and Rousell. And in terms of attendees, we're joined today by councillor Dan Thomas, cabinet member for highways. And in line with standing orders 25, we've got councillor Frye and councillor Cox in attendance as well.
Questions of interest? Members of this committee would declare any interest that they may have in any item to be considered at the meeting prior to any discussion taking place on that item. We have no items requiring urgent attention and we have no public participation. Okay, so in accordance with the scrutiny procedure rules, the requisite number of councillors, Dawson, Lever, Connet, Tidley, Cox and Youssef have invoked the call-in procedure in relation to the decision of the cabinet member for highways relating to the proposal for pay and display price increases 2025. This is on the grounds that pay and display fees charges see increases of up to 50% in charges in some communities. At a time when traders are struggling and businesses are closing, increasing the cost of visiting areas to contribute to the local economy seems counterproductive. Increases may be necessary, but it is felt that these can be fair and more considerate of local needs and not as substantial in one hit. The monitoring officer has reviewed this and is satisfied with the call-in and it's valid and meets the threshold required. The cabinet member's decision on this matter will be held in abeyance until the call-in procedure has been concluded. The scrutiny committee's views will be reported to the meeting of the cabinet on the 12th of November this year. I'll ask Louise to outline the process, which is there, put my teeth back in, after today's meeting regarding the call-in, in line with scrutiny procedure rules. Louise?
Please? Of course, Chair. Yeah, we circulated this to members yesterday, so just a quick reminder of the scrutiny procedure rules set out in the constitution. So the committee, if having considered this decision, has any remaining concerns, it may refer the decision to cabinet for reconsideration and will set out in writing the reason for the concerns and any proposed amendments. If however, having considered the decision, the committee decide not to ask for it to be reconsidered or amended in any way, it shall be implemented with immediate effect.
Thank you. We have two councillors in attendance, understanding order 25 to speak to this item. Thank you, members, for attending and speaking to the committee today. Welcome first to councillor Frye. You have up to five minutes, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. While we acknowledge that the council's financial challenges, we strongly oppose the proposed pay and display increases. These hikes unfairly impact rural and low-income residents who rely on cars due to poor public transport. Many are already burdened by fuel costs from ongoing road diversions. Higher parking fees will only worsen that. Using parking as a revenue stream shifts the financial strain onto those least able to bear it. This risks damaging high-street footfalls and small businesses, and we question the transparency of the data behind these proposals. In many areas, parking is unavoidable. These increases will hit low-income households, elderly and disabled individuals, small businesses and their customers. We urge the committee to consider the coagulative impact on household budgets and community wellbeing. The cost of living pressures are putting lives at risk. The public must not be treated as a piggy bank to raid whenever they need more money. We should instead be looking at saving money in areas where it is wasted. The supporting councillors are councillor Michael Fiv cook, councillor Richard Hopley, councillor Nat Vanstone, councillor Mick Cochrane, councillor Heather Horner, councillor James Granger, councillor Sue Davis, councillor Neil Stevens, councillor Mark Berry, councillor Lynne Rousell, councillor Tony Stephens, councillor Tony Dempster, councillor Anthony Payne, councillor Robin Julian, councillor Neil Rayleigh and councillor Dermot McGough.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time and effort in attending today and your views have been noted. Welcome councillor Cox. Again, you have up to five minutes, please.
Well, thank you very much. I would endorse what's just been said. It's going to impact low-income families. Low-income people can't afford electric cars. They rely on local shops and the danger is a lot of, in my community, a lot of small businesses are on the line. They're really, there won't be some of them. An accountant told me some of them won't be here in a year's time with the cost of living. And I appreciate car parking charges are part of a small part, but they are part of a cumulative effect. And I do understand the policy, which is the Teambridge on-road, off-road parking. And of course, Timoftown Council, much to my anger, charges night-time parking in its car parks. So I do understand that the county has got a difficult position, but I would ask the cabinet to re-look at the policy of linking our charges to the charges made by district councils. And I put my hands up, I voted for the Teambridge branch. Which was buried in there was the car parking charges. So I think we need to look again at the charges and look at the cumulative effect on the high street and our residents. We are here, if nothing else, for the people of Devon. And therefore, I'd look, ask us, ask the cabinet to re-examine the charges, but look at the policy of linking them to the car, the on, the off-road car parking charges that we, we, the district councils impose. And, and I hope they'll look again. And I am pleased that the portfolio holders said he's not going to charge night-time charges like Timoftown Council in Timoth. So that's, that's very good, but we need, we need to think about our local businesses.
Okay. Thank you again very much for your time and effort in attending and your views have been noted. Okay, committee members will have received written reports as well that have been circulated from councillor Tidley, Youssef, Dawson and Connet. And I'll take those as read. Oh councillor Lever, is that the one that came in this morning? Yeah, one little procedural item that I have let these come through and be circulated, but in future, it's 24 hours, isn't it Louise, before a committee? Because we are relatively new, I've let them be circulated. But going forward, I would like items 24 hours before or they will not be accepted. Okay, just to make that clear now. You should also have received a written representation from a member of the public, which again will be taken as read. Thank you, members. I'll now move to the cabinet members and officers to introduce the item to the committee. Welcome to councillor, sorry councillor Todd, I've lost my place. Yes, it's councillor Thomas, member for highways. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning and good morning, members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to introduce the report. I will be brief as you requested. Members, what you're actually looking at today is the implementation on my part of a council pre-existing policy. And the policy is really quite a simple one and it's predicated around the principle that on-street parking should necessarily be more expensive than off-street parking. And we do that for a very simple reason, because we do not want cars driving around and around towns, looking for those potentially cheaper on-street spaces. We want them off the road into the off-street car parks. And therein lies the nub of this issue. It isn't about, it isn't about using parking as a revenue stream. It absolutely isn't. Indeed, we're not allowed by law to use that parking money as a revenue stream. So I can completely, I can confidently assure you that is the case, that we don't use parking as a revenue stream. We simply don't. So what I'm asking you today is to think about the fact of whether or not you agree with the fundamental policy of whether or not you should pay more to park for an hour or more on-street than you do in the off-street car parks. Because that's what this policy is about. If you don't like that policy, then you are perfectly within your gift to ask the cabinet to reconsider the policy. But in terms of requests around the charging and the increases, you will note if through the papers, that ordinarily, we put them up every two years. So they should have gone up last year. They didn't. I can't tell you why the previous administration chose not to put them up. You'll have to come to your own decision as to why that might have been the case, but they didn't. And so we are now three years down the line. Your recommendation today might be that we should look at putting them up every year, so that we don't have the same jump that we have by having to put them up now after a three-year period. But the basic principle remains that if they're going to be effectively managed as a traffic management procedure, they need to be more expensive than off-street parking. You'll also see at 3.4 of the report, I think it is, it actually tells you that increases are capped. So the maximum we can increase to achieve a parity rating is 50%. That means that in the report you've got, there are some on-street charging areas where we haven't actually been able to get above the district off-street because we've been capped at 50%. And actually, had we gone in those examples for parity plus 10%, we'd have to have increased by more than 50%. We haven't done that because our policy is clear and it's written down there for you. I don't think I need to say anything else at this stage. I'm happy to answer to questions, but I just want to make it clear that the reason why we're not recommending a 20% rise this year and a 30% rise next year or in one case, or 10% here and 15% there next year is because that doesn't achieve the policy aim. That wouldn't give us parity plus 10%. And that's the policy. Whether you agree with the policy or not, of course, is a matter for this committee. Thank you.
Get the notes. Okay, if I could go to Chris Rook, welcome. Do you have anything to add to councillor Thomas's introduction, please?
Thank you, Chair. And just very briefly, councillor Thomas has provided a perfect summary, but I just thought it might be useful to just take us back to the policy aims that were set out in cabinet in November 22. Just reiterating the points that Dan's made really, but you did the point of longer stays happening in off-street car parks is to reduce that recirculation of traffic, you know, people looking for that cheaper option on-street. Minimising congestion, improving air quality on that basis, on-street by keeping the shorter stays on-street and we achieve a higher turnover, which is all about achieving footfall for the businesses. So our cheap tariffs or our short-stay tariffs are relatively cheap. So in a number of communities, for example, Ilford, Coombe Martin and Timoth, Dawlish as well, there are free periods for the shorter stays. So we are trying to get those short stays turning over for lower costs to feed the footfall to the high street. As Dan says, you know, paying display tariffs are not designed to create a surplus, but to influence travel parking choices. Thank you, Chair.
Dear, not on the microphone today. Let's remember to keep our questions on point and to the point regarding this item. Consider if your questions have already been answered and keep our observations focused and I'll open the committee to questions. He's first. Councillor Reed, please.
Thanks. So some of the price increases have been capped at 50% because we couldn't increase them any further because of the policy. So how much will those need to be increased in future? When is the plan to do that? And say if we're going to do it next year anyway, why not set a cap lower this year and increase all of them a bit more next year if we've got to revisit it again anyway?
Do we want us that now? Yeah, the current policy is that we renew every two years. So if we were not to increase now, you would have a prolonged period of time where we weren't anywhere near being policy compliant and therefore the difference, the gulf between on-street and off-street would be even larger, which I would argue would potentially cause more of a problem in terms of that which we're trying to avoid. So we're really keen to try and get those prices to be like that. So at the moment, in the example we're talking about, if we're not quite there yet, we would argue it is still better to be like that than it is to be like that, because the gap would make those spaces so desirable that you would have some sort of Hunger Games environment going on, where people would be literally circling for those spaces because they were so much cheaper than the ones off-street. That's completely counterproductive to what we're trying to achieve.
So with the ones that aren't at, the ones that were capped, how much, are we going to wait two years then before we increase them again by up and by up to how much? Do we know?
Well, under the current policy, we would wait two years. But of course, the answer to the question, councillor Reed, is it, it depends, because this is, this is one of those really unusual policies, which is unashamedly reactive. We are reacting to what off-street parking charges are. People talk about a race to the top. That's not our intention. Our intention is to get traffic off the road circling. So actually, the reality is, the only way our on-street prices don't go up is if off-street prices don't go up. So my message to double hatters would be you need to lobby your, your portfolio holders at district level, not to put the prices up anymore.
Thank you, Dan. As a double hatter, I see the predicament and in Exeter, we do regularly raise our prices as the commercial capital of the county. So I can see the predicament in that we're paying catch-up all the time in relation to this. And I think some of this is a post-COVID hangover where councils were reluctant immediately after COVID to increase and then got into a new cycle and delayed for a year, et cetera. So we're seeing this position, we're now waiting three years rather than the two, whereas lots of districts do it on an annual basis. The one point, and what I thought was one interesting point you made, districts often use car parking as a revenue source. And it can be quite significant in some places. You make the point that as a county council, we do not use this as a revenue source. The only thing I find missing from the report is any relation to the financial impact of revenue in regard to these changes. I don't know how much we raise currently from our off-street, on-street parking and how much difference this will make in budgetary terms. Are we talking, because you talk about the money being diverted to the country parks, et cetera. But it'd be some, it'd be interesting to know the scale of finances involved currently being raised, the intended ones by these changes.
Okay, so if, if we raise a surplus, then we are allowed to spend it on very specific areas around improving transport, basically. I mean, Chris, do you want to give some more specifics?
See, thank you, councillor Thomas. Yeah, just to answer that question. So the increase in surplus cannot be the reason why we set our tariffs. We haven't modelled an outcome from this proposal tariff changes, because you know, the aim is to actually get a lot of those drivers into off-street car parks. So this isn't a financial measure, but in terms of that clarity on what pay and display means for Devon in terms of income, the total income from pay and display in Devon is £4 million, which is relatively modest compared to district authorities in many cases. As Dan explained, how we spend that is bound by legislation. So section 55 of the Traffic Regulations Act 1984. And that typically means it's about provision and operation of public services or public transport rather. Highway and road improvement projects, farm management improvements and subsidy to the country parks, Stover and Grand Western. So some examples of expenditure, we provide 3.368 million to bus services and from surpluses, the on-street parking account, that makes up 60% of all bus subsidies, bus subsidies provided by Devon County Council. Some other areas of investment are maintaining the signs and lines associated with parking. So the waiting bays and signs associated with that, that's £325,000. We invest £900,000 in cyclic maintenance, that's birch cutting, grass cutting. Other areas of interest might be the setup of moving traffic enforcement. So we've allocated £100,000 to that, variable messages, variable message signs, 10,000. Road safety improvements, so the quick wins we can do to help the network, £50,000. Obviously, there's other funding elsewhere. Park and rides, so paying business rates and minor site maintenance on that, 154. And the subsidy to public, all the county parks is £481,000.
Thank you for that. Just for clarification, parking enforcement in regard, is that, does that produce an income from the charges to people who aren't parking correctly? And presumably, the cost of the enforcement officers comes out of this budget as well?
Yes, that's correct. So the, again, these aren't financial aims, this is a statement of fact. Our parking service, so our civil enforcement officers right there doing the tough job on the front line. Their service typically runs around cost neutral. So in the past, we've run a small surplus of in the order of £100,000 per year. As has been various changes to remuneration and so forth and supply chain costs, it now runs at a very small deficit. So any surplus from pay and display, residence parking permits, that covers that cost. That is legally the first draw on the account.
Councillor Richardson, please.
Does that work? Perfect. Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you councillor Thomas, hear what you say in your report. And I just want to pick on two things in particular. So the way I read this report, it is very focused on matching parity with district car parks, but there's two areas where that isn't the case and they're an extra and it's around the university and the RTNE. Now, and you know, these are in residential areas where the only options for parking on-site are the private on-site car parks. And you have residence parking zones around these areas which have pay and display. Some of the proposals today to match the university or RTNE car park prices are almost at the maximum of 50%. Isn't this just going to be pushing traffic into residential areas and cause more issues than it's trying to sort?
Well, I mean, that is a challenge and it's always going to be a challenge, but ultimately, but ultimately the policy is there. I mean, in that, that specific example, Chris, are we, are we going parity with privates on that one?
Yes. So where we've got large traffic generators such as a hospital, it seems to make some sense to compare our charges to that, that tariff. Obviously, what we're trying to do is avoid all the hospital visitors filling the on-street bays and circulating those residential streets. As you say, we've not quite achieved that aim because we have applied the cap, but we have made it that less appealing, so.
I mean, presumably you would like us to apply the cap. I mean, if we didn't apply the cap, it would be worse.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm not seeing anything in this report though, which eases my concerns about, you know, areas without residence parking schemes, where I'm getting residents telling me that, you know, the roads are blocked because staff stay at the RTNE, are parking there for free. And you know, in some cases, these roads are so clogged, you know, you've got pavement parking and there's concerns about emergency service access. And you know, to rise on-street parking by 50% in areas slightly closer, you know, to me, that's just going to encourage more and more people to park in the non-residence parking zones and just make the matter worse.
Yeah, it's absolutely a challenge. I mean, in terms of pavement parking, we need to do more through the parking and traffic regulations outside of London. I'm not going to use the acronym. I'm not going to get caught out. Yeah. Where we sit on that panel and we are constantly lobbying for exactly that point on that specific issue, because of course, outside of London, it's not currently illegal to park on pavements, which is a separate issue, but I know one that will cause you significant issues within an urban setting. On that point, I will give you my commitment. We will continue to lobby to try and make it the case. Although of course, in other places, there becomes a law of unintended consequences. What happens when you move that on? Because you just create problems elsewhere. But I hear the point that I don't, no one's saying, I'm not going to come to a scrutiny panel and say to you that the policy is perfect. I can't do that, you know. But it is what it is and it's, it's put in place for a reason in good faith that you've heard for, you've heard the reasons why, and it is literally about that. If it, if it, if there are a couple of areas that doesn't work in, I'm very happy to come and meet you and have separate conversations about how we can best look at tweaking where possible. But the general principle, I think, needs to stand and certainly would be my recommendation to the committee, that we're doing this for that very specific reason, stopping cars circulating on-street.
Thank you very much. I have a question. We know the prices are not going up to create a surplus, you know, we've said that. My concern is that if we didn't put the prices up, coming at it from the other angle to a lot of people in the room, the area the money does go to currently would suffer with inflation and we would need to fill that gap, obviously. And I've just, I know this has been circulated to all members, but I just wanted to remind you, if we can put it up again on the board, particularly on the buses, what will happen if the money was not going from our parking to our buses? And this isn't agree what the point is, but this is reality.
And I thank you, Chair, because the first time I saw this map as a cabinet member, I was utterly shocked. So members, what you're seeing on the board there, those, those red lines are services that we support financially. And you know, I think it's particularly telling when you look at the second map, which are the ones that effectively, well, it says what it says. If we didn't provide, if we didn't provide that financial support, those subsidies, that's your bus service in Devon. Picture tells a thousand words.
Thank you. Councillor Ray.
Thank you, Chair. I was looking at this. Seems like the only serious economist who's done any work on, on this and who actually sort of first identified the problem, the cars circling, looking for cheaper parking spaces is Donald Shoup, who unfortunately died earlier this year. And his ideal situation is one where in on-street parking, his ideal situation for on-street parking, one where there are, where the prices are set so that there are always a couple of spaces available. So that there is available parking to encourage footfall, to encourage turnover. How do we know where we are relative to that ideal situation? Because it may be that we're putting up prices in places where there isn't actually heavy excessive demand on on-street parking. And therefore, so what's, what's, what's the data set on which this is based and how granular is that?
I'll refer to, I'll refer to Chris for the granularity. I mean, what I would ace and to add again, councillor Ray, is, is the fact that what this report doesn't highlight is the fact that there are plenty of spaces for less than an hour that are free, whereas you have reason to know yourself from your own community, you know. So that's an important point to make in the first instance, because it will be difficult there to, to, to have any granularity around that, because of course, they are free. But Chris, can you talk to the?
Yeah, so I think, yeah, hands up, data sets, we haven't got those figures. The way we've managed parking Devon is led by the local input of the local member at the time. So you know, in all our key communities, we have a demand for parking. We need to manage parking. So you'll either have limited waiting and display. Our belief and the belief of the park industry is pay and space is much more effective, because it's got that sort of one-stop effect, rather than having to compete local vehicles and return. We believe that's the most effective tool. So generally, what we see on our network is a hierarchical approach, approach. So it's needs-led on that basis. Anecdotally, as I move around the network, as I listen to what members and public are talking, telling officers, our parking is in high demand. You know, in the past 24 hours, I've had correspondents from Dartmouth. You know, in the past 24 hours, I've had correspondents from Dartmouth about parking issues there. Literally, they haven't got pen display, but in their limits of waiting. You know, if you walk through Southern Hay in Exeter, drive through Southern Hay in Exeter, the parking is largely filled. But we can have a look at a base for future reference.
Thank you. I'd just be concerned that in certain places, I'm sort of accepting the overall policy. But in certain places, we're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist.
If I, if I might, I suppose that the only thing is, though, of course, that if we don't solve the problem that doesn't exist, it will become a problem. Because the price difference between on-street and off-street will become such, as the example I was making to councillor Reed, that you'll end up with a situation where on-street will be demonstrably cheaper. And then you will get a situation where people who hitherto were parking off-street decide it's much more financially sensible to park on-street than you get that. So I think we will potentially be creating our problem for ourselves.
Precisely, which is why I think your earlier suggestion that we may want to recommend that we look at this on an annual basis rather than every two years is a sensible one. Because, I mean, you know, again, in the ideal world, you'd price it dynamically so that you're constantly adjusting prices to reflect demand. But we can't do that. So but the closer we can get to that, the better.
Councillor Hookway, next, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yes. I think this is a complex issue that needs to be much more widely explored and appreciated. It cannot be seen in isolation. I was very interested in what Christopher Rook said about how the money that is raised through parking is used for a number of issues. And please correct me if I got this wrong. You said highways improvements, bus services, parking bays, verge cutting, traffic enforcement, road safety improvements and park and ride. Is that correct?
That's correct. One little clarification, in terms of highway improvement, that can't be structural improvement. So it's got to be land adjacent to highway, which is where we get our cyclic maintenance on the verge cutting, so unfortunately not par-holes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. But all of those are very important. And this morning, I'm sure you, as I did, saw the news headline that inflation has risen by 3.8% over the last year. If we are not increasing parking charges on a yearly basis or as a minimum as a two-yearly basis, we are failing to provide those services and pay for those services, such as just listed, which are really important to all residents across the county. Bus services in particular are a huge issue because frankly, they are inadequate. We need to do something about that, but that's another day. So I absolutely accept that we must increase these charges. They're not unreasonable in many ways. They certainly do not match what the district council is charging. And we really must grab this and accept that it's a financial matter rather than just a matter about traffic. Thank you, Chair.
Did I respond to that, Tim? Thank you. I mean, Councillor Hookway, I thank you for that and I totally take the point about that the fact that in many cases, they aren't, they aren't actually expensive. I mean, a lot has been made of the 50%. Now, if we go to Ilfracombe, for example, there is a 50% price rise on a car park. And that is a car park where in the winter, you're going from a two-hour cost of £1 to a two-hour cost of £1.50. Now, I would invite anyone listening to this meeting or indeed members here to tell me where else you can park for two hours for that sort of money. You can't, you know, when the district councils, and I put my hand up, I'm a double hatter, as you know, I'm a district leader. When we put our district council car parking prices up, we benchmarked our prices against districts from all over the country and discovered that down here, we were many times, in some cases, cheaper than areas in other parts of the country. You know, I don't think even now, we are necessarily anywhere near the top end of what people charge. And you raise helpfully, again, the fact that we do, where we generate a surplus, we put it to good use. If we didn't generate a surplus, you've seen that bus map, the point is made, we would have to find that money from somewhere else.
The Cable, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Cabinet portfolio holder. I don't have any issue with the principle of the policy really at all. What I have found within this paper is it's short on contextual data and finance. And I would have liked to have seen more of that, which has now come out in the discussion here. The budget has already been set for this year and that was set back in February. I'd like some clarity about the timescale for this introduction, if it is to go through. If it is this fiscal year, why does it need to be introduced as a top-up to the budget? And if deferred to April, what is the implication of that?
Through you, Chair. Thank you, Councillor Cable. This is off-budget. We're not allowed to budget for this money. We are legally not allowed to budget for this. So as such, it's not part of the budget process. It is a standalone policy.
Thank you. That explains why it's considered September on a two-year cycle.
Correct. And to go back to the point that was made previously, you know, it absolutely should have been made last year. It should have been made last year and I regret that it wasn't. Because, of course, between last year and now, it may very well be that the districts have put car parking prices up since, which means that the rises that we are putting up now are greater. And that in itself is unhelpful, I think, in terms of what the committee is being asked to look at, i.e. larger rises that would necessarily have been the case had we done this a year ago.
And I would support the annual review. So it's my last question about if this was deferred, was implemented from April, beginning of the next fiscal year, what is the budget implication?
Well, there isn't because it's off-budget. But from a policy point of view, no. Sorry, I'll bring the Director of Finance in. But what I was going to say is the difference from my point of view is that you would have a period of time partly where the price differential between the two on- and off-street car parks was such that we would have an issue where we weren't actually policy compliant. That's why we do it. We do, you know, at the moment, we're not policy compliant because we've wasted a year effectively.
Can I just come in there and let Angie, I think, did you want to say something?
Thank you. I just wanted to get the clarity around the budgeting issue. So when the budget is set each February, and the same thing happened in the February that just went by, there was a delegation around fees and charges generally, not just car parking or fees and charges. So there's a delegation put in place for members to make delegated decisions, which is what's happened. So that is, that is all taken part of the budget setting. And the cabinet member is quite right, there is no budget for this, so it's not a revenue budget. However, the financial consequences of what we're discussing and the price increases do form part of the budget insofar as there's a near-marched reserve for on-street parking. So through the years, we charge income, we incur expenditure. Any leftover income, any surplus then goes into that ring-fenced reserve, which, as was described, is regulated in statute, what we can spend that money on. And then the following year, if we want to spend more or less on buses or whatever else it is, then it comes out of that reserve. Those level, that level of reserves is noted by Cabinet and by County Council. And this price increase formed part of that estimated reserve balance. So it's not a revenue budget as such, but it does form part of the budget insofar as it's a reserve. And if we don't generate enough income, enough surplus, there won't be enough money in the reserve to pay for all the services that we want to pay for. And that on-street parking reserve does form part of the budget in that ring-fenced way. Helpful, Chair.
If I could just come back in, Chair, and in layman's terms, what I was going to say was that if we don't do it, we have to find the money effectively from somewhere else or don't spend it. Yeah, absolutely. Yes, yeah.
Thank you. Could we have councillor Julian next, please?
Thank you, Chair. You talk mainly about Exeter, about people driving around and around and around, looking for the cheapest car parking space. I find that a bit bizarre that somebody like me would look for a cheaper car park. But I'll just find a space and just park there if I can find one. However, it seems to be quite heavily put into Exeter. But I'm from Biddeford, okay? We don't drive around and around and around, there's plenty of, but it's very expensive to park. And we have a lot of shops that are empty. And it seems that people are really concerned that people don't stop there. They even, dare I say, Christmas time, they actually stop charging anybody to try and draw the customers in to go shopping in the town at Christmas time. But every other time, it seems to be quite heavily the cost of putting this up. So I feel that, you know, unless you're strong on Exeter, but what about when we go further out? Even Barnstable is getting empty and they're concerned about that because of the costs of car parking. And I feel that, you know, one size doesn't fit all. I think you need to be looking at it carefully. Thank you.
Through you, Chair. Thank you. Councillor Julian, I'm only talking about Exeter in response to questions. And I'm only talking about Exeter because you'll note at the start of the report, there's lots of car parks in Exeter. I'm very happy to talk about the whole county. I'm very happy to talk about Biddeford specifically, where you will note that 30 minutes is going up from 50p to 60p. And an hour is going up from £1.10 to £1.30. I would humbly suggest that those shouldn't be price rises that put somebody off because they are still markedly below that which you would pay elsewhere. I mean, on the Strand, the biggest rise I can see in Biddeford, the Strand is a two-hour price rise of £2.70 to £3.30, except that's a 60p rise. But of course, what we're trying to do is we're trying to encourage people on the shortest days. So again, a Biddeford, on the Strand and New Road, 30 minutes will now be 60 pence. An hour will be £1.30, an hour and a half will be £2.80. I would be very happy to come to Biddeford and pay those prices personally, I can assure you. Barnstable, again, slightly more expensive in, I can't actually read that, in Sapperton Street, I think. One hour from £1.80 to £2. So, you know, there are, one size absolutely doesn't fit all. I totally agree with you. And if you look through the report, you will see that that is the narrative, that one size doesn't fit all. You know, if you go to Budley Salterton, 30 minutes is 50p. If you go to Coomartson, 30 minutes is free, in fact, and then you pay for an hour. If you go to Dawlish, 30 minutes is free. But if you go to Dawlish to Brunswick Place or Marine Parade down on the front, 30 minutes is 70p. So, yeah, it is, you're absolutely right, one size doesn't fit all. But we go back to the policy. What the policy is doing is looking at district council car parks, trying to find parity and then making it slightly dearer by about 10% to keep that flow. You're very lucky that you don't drive around looking for cheaper car parking spaces. I mean, you've heard from your colleagues at the other end of the table that actually, a lot of this is about the cost of living and not, you know, and the public don't want to be treated as a piggy bank, I think, was the quote. I completely accept the public don't want to be treated as a piggy bank. But some people, of course, will look for the cheaper parking spaces and we want those spaces to be off-road, not on-road.
Please, Chair, just quickly, yes, I can see where you're coming from. But also, the further out of Exeter you go, the public transport is useless. It is so bad. And with all these extra charges, it seems to be grossly unfair.
I totally accept the public transport, the further out you go, Councillor Julian. But you will, you will have seen that map, that bus map, you know, and you've heard from the Director of Finance that if we don't, if we don't make a surplus, we will end up having to try and find money from elsewhere to pay for that and then other services suffer. So it's a really, it's a difficult balancing act, I get that. My best advice to you, as I said before, is to do two things. Ask us to look at it annually so the price jumps aren't so great and ask us to review the policy in general. I'm sure Cabinet would be quite happy to do both those things.
Thank you very much. Councillor Fyffe-Cook, please.
Good morning to you. I don't want to go into the finances because a simple reason is we know we have to increase charges and always have to increase charges. But my concern is perception. If you ask the shopkeeper what would increase their turnover, the first thing they would say is free parking. Because the simple fact is, is people don't park in villages, they don't park in small towns anymore. It is expensive. I can understand and I do believe that there is a difference between rural areas and towns. And I would absolutely agree with that, there has to be. But equally, the fact is, what about people, residents, who can't afford permits? So they're having to park on the streets. We have to consider that the population, many people are really scratching to survive. Also, the fact is, is that if you're saying, well, some of the money we take in the extra charges can go to buses. I'm sorry, as a country person, I quite like seeing buses. I don't see much of them. I wave as they go past. So it's a bit thick, I think, asking people to pay extra money for parking to subsidize a service that they don't get. So I know there's a problem and I know you want to subsidize buses and I totally agree with it. I just think making it look as if you're going to charge people who can only just afford a car more money so they can support buses that they don't get is a good, is a good look. And I do think that, I understand totally, we have to increase the price. But what I would ask everybody is to be reasonable about this. We all make the mistake of looking about at things at the price that we can afford. And when you've got money in the pocket, you always think you're well off. There are many, many poor areas and they rely on cars, they rely on parking. And I don't think it's a great way continually to penalize people at the bottom. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody wants to come back on that or are we?
Yeah, I will. Thank you through your chair, if I may. Thank you, Councillor Fyffe-Cook. I mean, the residents versus businesses is a difficult one, isn't it? Because actually, if you want to support businesses, you don't want residents parking for any length of time in those key parking spaces outside of shops. I mean, you heard Chris talking about Dartmouth. I mean, Councillor Ray and I know only too well that in Dartmouth, there are our limited parking spaces where people would permit to parking them for longer than that. And the shopholders are furious because they want, they want the quick churn. And this policy tries to achieve exactly that, that quick churn. In the sense that if you look at the prices, you know, you get a period of time that's free or you get a period of time for an hour, which is more reasonable in terms, you know. So you talk about being reasonable. Councillor Julian talked about areas outside of Exeter. I would argue that, you know, in the more rural areas, prices are in many cases more reasonable. If you compare what you're paying in Exeter to what you're paying in Biddeford or in Coomartson, I think you'll find the prices are actually less than they are in the city. So I think there is already a degree of being reasonable towards rural rather than urban. I take the point about not wanting to pay for buses. It is a difficult one. But the law says how any surplus should be spent, you know, our hands are tied on that.
The problem is, is that you might think 50 pence is not very much. The problem is, is that's always going to be the attitude if you've got 50 pence in your pocket. I don't think that we, everything we do here affects people. And I think the fact is, is that we have to accept, I didn't become a councillor to put more burden onto anybody. I know that we have to do that because we wouldn't be able to provide the services. I just think in certain areas, I think we should be a little bit more considerate because we will be perceived, and I know you keep saying that this is not a revenue, but people will perceive it as such because whenever you take more money out of a person's pocket, that's what they, they feel we're doing it for. Thank you very much for your answers. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, I accept that point. And that's, I accept that point that people think it's about that, which is why I welcome the scrutiny challenge today as an opportunity in public to rebut that.
Thank you. Gosh, sorry, I'm getting croaky. Thank you all. I've got one more question so far and then I will close the questions unless anybody has a question that hasn't come up as yet and they've got a burning question. There's one more over there. Great. So councillor Mitchell, please.
Chair, I'd like to move a recommendation so we can bring this to a solution, we hope. I would endorse the recommendation as stated at A in page one of Agenda Item Five. But I would add a second part, B, that the committee requests the executive to review the frequency of future changes in on-street car parking charges. And I'm putting that in because I believe there is a question about whether it should be two years, one year or what frequency. I also think we need to work in conjunction with our district councils so that we don't necessarily have officer time spent looking at changes where the district council has not made changes. And I would hope the executive would consider trying to get a policy that looks on district-by-district basis. So if Torridge or West Devon or North Devon review theirs, and that's within our cycle review. But if Exeter doesn't alter theirs, Exeter stays as it is. And I would hope that in the point of that consideration is encapsulated within what we're saying there. And I think that is what is we. And I think that is what is required to take this matter further. Thank you, and hopefully I'll find a second.
I'd second that, Chair.
Thank you, we've got that, we have, we've started working on something like that, which is quite good. That's the recommendation. So we've got councillor Kearney, please.
Thank you very much, Chair. My point is quite a simple one. The way it progresses. And if we get it got the wrong. Percent. Really, we're speaking about some of these parking hours for two pound fifty, which isn't an awful lot of money. So the forty-eight percent looks like it's on. When speaking about one pound twenty and eighty pence, which isn't a great deal of money compared to use percentages to make things faked more than they are. So the headline that comes away saying we are putting up a percentage as opposed to buy the real the reality of we are paying for the parking two pound fifty just now. You can see why people drive round about it, it's like that. That is quite cheap. The other point that I would make, if you go into a car park and you stay for a couple of minutes, they will slap you with a big brown frame, which is hap. That is expensive parking as well. Thank you.
Before we go to the.
Thank you, sorry, I'll be I'll be quick, and it's just to address councillor Kearney. I completely get that point, but I think my only concern is with the examples you've raised in Exeter, these are the ones benchmarked against private car parks. These aren't people who will just park there, you know, once every few weeks to go to the shops. These are people who work every day in these places, so that difference, even though it might be, say, one pound twenty, that might be paid every single day, and that will add up. But I get your point, I just wanted to, I think the the point I want to make here is that I I'm slightly concerned that we've joined together two different customers of on-street parking. One being the short-stay shopper who might only, you know, rock up into town once a week, once every two weeks with the commuter. And I think the this, what I'd like the executive and the cabinet to reflect on is actually we need to consider that these are two different customers. And possibly, I think like councillor Julian said, one size doesn't fit all. That's true, because we're dealing with two very different customers here.
If I may, Chair, I would hope that people turning up regularly for business purposes would consider approaching their district council for permits for for off-street. Because certainly that's what I would recommend people, and I know that they do in my own district. Because it is, it comes back to the argument again that we are actively looking for off-street to be cheaper. In in the scenario you've just painted, I I wouldn't, I wouldn't be wanting people to be parking for long periods of time on the highway if they can get a business permit and park it off-street car parks, that would be preferable.
Thank you very much, all. Okay, we've had a recommendation. Councillor Mitchell proposed, councillor Keeble seconded, we'll put it on the screen, if that's okay. That's all right, we're nearly there. It's been proposed and seconded, so once everybody can see it, now we've got it together.
I would just say councillor Mitchell, if I've not quite got it right, can you just let me know? And if I need to change any of the words, please, because I couldn't type as fast as you spoke.
Let's have a look. We can enjoy it. Can I just add here something we haven't got in is with more localised data? Is that something we'd want to add in?
Amplifying my own personal belief is that if we're matching district councils, it would seem logical to work in the same patterns as district councils, we aren't doing unnecessary work when it's not required. I would hope it's that is encapsulated in the in the report. And the only word missing is the review of future car parking charges. Chair, could I just ask what that, what what the third bullet point means in real terms? I understand what the second bullet point means, but what is the, you know, thinking thinking with my other hat on? We we don't work in conjunction with other districts when we put our district prices up. So the county would have to basically be experts in clever wiency, I would suggest to to be able to. I was just trying to encapsulate in the word frequency, both the timescale you use, but also to, I would hope you would bring it in tandem with the district council so that the two would tie in together, rather than doing a whole county review when it might not be necessary. Okay, so I'm I'm told offices meet with districts anyway, and then we react, yeah.
Can I just come in here if anybody else has any points on the above, please?
I wonder if councillor Mitchell would would accept the addition, because I think knowing what district councils doing is 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 essential, but I would add that actually knowing how our on-street provision is being used, and the issue of of whether we are solving a problem that doesn't exist, et cetera, is I think we need more more data on that because one size doesn't fit all, we need to know how 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 what pressures there are on on our on our parking provisions. I'd add, I would ask you to accept a modification that that says that the cabinet identifies the data that would help it ensure that future adjustments. I'd I'd also ask that we in the first line, replace the word increase with the word adjust, because there's no reason that they will always go up, they could go down.
Chair, Chair, could I just respond to that whilst I I recognise the request and the value of that, for us to undertake an occupancy survey across the county is a is a major undertaking that we would have to commission. Certainly, we don't have resources to do that, that's that's a a major ask that we would have to, we would have to consider. With likely significant costs, so it can be done, but it's it's not as easy as it sounds.
I'm sorry if I made it sound easy, I never thought it was going to be that, but I don't think proceeding without evidence is a particularly attractive option.
Chair, if I may, the the latest report, the leader was telling me only yesterday, the latest reports on the AA suggest that the problem that Devon has is not what it charges for its car parking spaces, but that it doesn't have enough car parking spaces.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Reid, you wanted to come in?
I just wonder if we need to add review of the maximum cap increase as well as the frequency. I think the the issue was raised in the motion was the sudden spike, the increase, the fifty percent is what they didn't like. And if we had a lower cap, but we reviewed it more regularly, hopefully that would that would be okay, and it would hopefully incentivise sticking to the annual review, rather than as happened last year, they were supposed to review it last year, they left it another year, but if they knew we can only increase it by a lower amount, maybe they'd be more incentive to stick to the regular reviews, so maybe also looking at the the maximum price cap increase.
Councillor Mitchell, can you with that?
As I say, what I thought was going to be straightforward and similar, we're now getting, you know, we're creating our own car parking spaces on the. First of all, on B, it should be. Yes, sorry, I I think we need to look at three, the wording of three as it is at the moment to get that right. Because what we're saying is that we're not working in conjunction with the districts, but we're noting changes and the frequency which districts operate their changes, which might trigger a review by us. That's essentially what we're trying to say, it's how we get that in a word and in a sentence there and that one. Again, I think in relation to the cabinet identifying, I would just put just not being pedantic, but I'll put the word available data. That implies that what you've got already, rather than having to go out and, you know, because the district councils will also have data on car parking frequency and flow through their car parks, which might be helpful. I don't think necessarily we're aiming for the local authorities to spend vast amounts of money to do that. And also, I'd be happy to accept the point that as well, if we're, it would seem logical that if you're increasing the frequency or modelling your frequency on district councils, the fifty percent cap might not be appropriate. But at the same time, that is a maximum. And I would have thought, therefore, if you're doing it more frequently, you're highly unlikely, unless your district councils have gone somewhat ecstatic in their view of what charges should be made, that you would. So I would therefore, I think, I would keep personally recommend that the executive consider keeping the fifty percent. But it would be the exceptional circumstance, and that exceptional circumstance would be triggered by the district council's changes, not by changes being made by this council.
Okay, yep.
Thank you, Chair. Could I just ask as a as a professional courtesy, that in three, we add the words continue to at the start to reflect the 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 status quo?
Yep, great, thank you. And Donad Manson, you want to come in?
Yeah, I'd ask the committee to consider the financial impacts on staffing as part of your recommendations. Additional tasks means additional staff time, and we're currently facing a budget gap of thirty-three million pounds as an organisation next year. So I think it's important, and I'm pleased to hear members talk today about impacts and costs. But I think it's important that that is considered because some of those recommendations are additional staff time within a context of a thirty-three million pound budget gap.
Thank you. Anybody would like to come back on that, or?
I think we partly covered that by adding the word available data. What we're talking about is existing data that is available to the county and potentially to the districts to access, not necessarily going out and creating new streams of information to justify. So it's what is available, so we're not looking for additional staff costs involved in that beyond simply using what data is currently available.
Thank you. Okay. Did we want to pop something else on? Okay, so we have a proposal and we have a second. Councillor Keeble, yes, just, you're okay.
Councillor Keeble, you originally seconded councillor Mitchell's recommendation, are you happy with all the changes and still happy to be seconded for this one, please?
I am.
Thank you. Right, we'll move to the vote. All in favour? Okay, against? Abstain. Okay, let's go. Thank you. Wonderful, we can move on to item six. How are we doing on time? We've got loads of time. No, don't say that, but I've noticed people nipping in and out, yeah, do we want just a ten-minute comfort break and then we'll move on to item six?
We can be in eleven forty.
Can I call everybody back to their seats, please? We're on to item six, pay and display tariff increases at county council premises. Councillor Thomas, cabinet member for highways, please, if you wouldn't mind.
This isn't, if you don't mind, Chair, this isn't actually me, so I'm going to ask Mr Ricks to present this one.
Please do.
Morning, Chair, morning, everybody. Yeah, these, the, the increase in tariffs, this is something that would, a bit like the previous item, normally have been delegated to cabinet member. In light of the call-in that we had on the on-street, we took the opportunity to use this meeting to effectively pre-scrutinise these changes, so we got, got that, that, that kind of conversation around them. So in addition to on-street parking, the council has a number of, a limited number of off-street car parks associated with some of our premises. So this looks at, the report looks at review of tariffs associated with car parks, so that's the, the two country parks, Grand Western Canal and Stover, and we've got a car park at Torview. And country parks typically review their tariffs every two years, the last review is August 23. The proposal is to raise the tariffs by 10% in line with inflation. And the team recognised that regular users of the park, typically local people, would be impacted the most, so proposed a £1 increase on the annual permits, raising the cost from £25 to £26. And it's proposed that the tariffs at Torview car park are raised to match the off-street car parks operated by North Devon District Council at North Walk to us. So here we're looking at parity without the 10%, because this is an off-street car park and we're just trying to match, match the adjacent car parks. So slightly different but similar.
Thank you very much. I'll open the floor to questions. Councillor Reid.
So I see the, the Torview car parks increasing by significantly more than the, the 10%. And it says in the report that the prices there haven't been increased for at least 14 years. Was that because the, the car parks that we're trying to achieve parity with haven't increased for 14 years? Because you said it was reviewed recently, so just wondering why it's been so long since that was increased.
And I'll be, I'll be honest with you, I think it's an oversight. I think it's the one kind of off-street, off-street car park we have, and I think it's, it's sat between different teams and I think it's an oversight.
Councillor Mitchell, please.
Just a quick question in relation to paragraph 323 about frequency. Are we to assume that you would consider looking at the frequency of changes in these charges in relation to the item that we just considered, or should these be treated as a total standalone with a different, a different frequency?
We'd be happy to, to match annually if that's what members preferred us to do.
Because in the previous discussion, we were talking about asking the cabinet to look at the frequency of future charges, but also to bear in mind that they were related to when district councils make changes. Is this a similar pattern in this case, or are these totally, totally standalone? Because if, if they are relating to what district councils in the area are doing, it would seem logical that the pattern of review for the, that the cabinet decide in relation to item five should also be carried forward for this item.
Yeah, no, there's two, there's two separate issues here. So, so the country parks is about inflation, the one at Torview is about matching the district car park without the 10% because it's an off-street car park. So, you know, members might take the, or might take the decision that actually they want to do the Torview annually to match any district changes. Stover and country, and Grand Western Canal is about inflation. We could do it annually, so you have a consistency of all car parks at the same time, but they are, they are as a different driver in the, in the change in tariffs.
And I just add to that, historically, when inflation was very low, that's why we ended up with a two-year review. So you were putting it up at a sensible level on a two-year cycle, probably over the last three years with more like probably 13% cumulative inflation, it could probably be, but that's why historically these were only ever reviewed every two years.
Any further questions?
So I'm struggling to kind of reconcile this with, with our earlier discussion. If the aim is to get people off the streets, presuming, I, I don't see what the advantage of just pricing, making sure that our price is the same as, is surely it would be beneficial to that goal to have a cheaper off-street car park in Barnstable than the district and fill up first?
We could do that, but the other side of that conversation is about, is about the surplus of that car park returns. So that's why we've matched and not gone any higher than districts. So it's about, it's about maximising the income we can whilst recognising the, the other parking opportunities that are around us.
And is, is the, is this, is the surplus on this car park treated in the same way and covered by the same constraints in, in its use as that from on-street parking?
No, that's the, the off-street car parks aren't bound by the same legislation, so there's freedom to use that money for the running of the actual pay, pay and display operation, and I think it returns back into our estates team.
Thank you.
Any members have any other comments? Officers, anything further to add? Okay. We'll, we'll go through, are we yours actually, it's better than mine. So the committee's asked to endorse the proposals to increase pay and display tariffs at the two county parks and endorse the proposals to increase pay and display tariffs at the Torview public car park. Do I have a proposer, please? And a seconder? Wonderful. All those four?
Could I propose an amendment?
Yeah.
An item C, that we ask the cabinet, get the right one, get the cabinet to consider whether these proposals should be reviewed annually.
Proposer and seconder happy with that? Right, so that is in?
You'd like a second amendment, sorry.
Okay, so if we could have a seconder to the amendment. Okay, so any, any other amendments, any more comments before we go to the vote? Okay. Voting on the amendment, so all those four, please. You have any abstent, abstent, abstain, I was going to say abstentions, but that's not right. Abstains, we have two. No, one.
Two abstains. What about councillor Julian, councillor Barrow?
Oh, yeah, two. Okay.
There were seven fours, no against and two abstentions.
I thought we were only voting on the amendment, which was the addition of an item C, that's what we were.
Maybe, maybe and C together?
It was, it was as amended.
Agreed by the, agreed as amended.
Yeah, sorry, sorry to not be clear on that. Thank you for the clarification. That was seven four, two no against and two abstentions. Okay.
We don't have any items which will be taken in the absence of the public and press, no part two, so I'd like to thank everybody for their attendance today and the officers. And the next meeting is on the 20th of November and are now closed, the meeting at 11:51. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Chair.